Exactly 100 days since the news broke of a $61 million bribery scandal spearheaded by former Ohio House Speaker Larry Householder and his associates surrounding House Bill 6. Even before the scandal became front page news, House Bill 6 was widely opposed by Ohioans because it bails out nuclear and coal plants at a cost of over $1 billion to Ohio consumers, puts 114,000 clean energy jobs at risk, and strips away clean energy programs that have protected Ohioans' health during this pandemic. Despite the fact that the bill was part of what is likely the largest bribery scheme ever perpetrated against the state of Ohio, and that multiple public opinion polls found that an overwhelming majority of Ohioans want the bill to be fully and immediately repealed, this bad bill remains in place. Today, two of those indicted in the scandal pled guilty in U.S. District Court to racketeering activities directly and specifically tied to the passage and preservation of House Bill 6. The alleged bribery scheme? Not alleged anymore. Criminal activities have occurred, and two of these individuals have said they are guilty of those activities. There is still so much to be revealed about this case, with the attorney general today, I'm sorry, the U.S. Attorney today saying that the investigation continues. Given this news, Ohioans can't afford to wait to have their voices heard on why the bill is bad for their health, their pocketbooks, and their economic future. Our legislators have failed us in demonstrating the leadership we deserve. The Ohio House Select Committee on Energy Policy and Oversight was created to consider a clean repeal of House Bill 6, but the committee did not invite the public to testify on either House Bill 746 or House Bill 738, the two bills that would repeal House Bill 6, before hearings were suspended until further notice. That is why these hearings have been organized, to ensure the public is part of the discussion. These hearings should have been conducted by Ohio lawmakers, but they chose not to hear from you. We are grateful that you have chosen to join us today to share your thoughts. In the two weeks since these hearings were announced, 264 Ohioans have registered to be part of this process. In that same time span, more than 2,000 Ohioans have engaged to get more information on repealing House Bill 6 by clicking through our event links, reading about the process, and now watching the recordings of our previous two hearings. With each passing day and breaking news story, Ohioans are more determined than ever to repeal House Bill 6, just not a majority of the Ohioans who serve as our legislators. For everyone's information, your audio and video feeds will only be live during the time of your testimony. You will be unmuted when it is time for your remarks, and you will see a transition on your screen as your camera goes live. It may look like you've been removed from the Zoom, but you have not. Give it just a moment, and you will then be visible to begin speaking. Make sure your camera is turned on so that you can be seen. Response to these hearings has been overwhelming, so we ask that you limit your comments to a total of two minutes to ensure everyone has a chance to speak. You will see one of our meeting chairs raise a flag when you have 15 seconds remaining. Today's hearing is being recorded to be shared with Ohio lawmakers and others, and our meeting chairs reserve the right to remove an attendee or mute their microphone if that individual is being disruptive to the meeting. This would include an excessive use of profanity, discriminatory language, and similar activities. We will only be taking comments from those who have pre-registered to speak today, and we will be announcing three speakers at a time to give you a sense of when you will be unmuted to speak. If you have a question for our chairs during the event, please feel free to type it into the chat box. This process is new to us, as it may be to many of you, but we appreciate everyone's patience and cooperation, and we look forward to hearing from all of those speaking today. Before I begin, I would like to recognize and thanks the legislators who have signed up to listen to testimony today. We are being joined by State Representative Tavia Galansky of Akron and Senator Matt Dolan. All right, well, thank you all so much for being with us. With that, we are ready to get started. Our first witness up today will be LeAnn Miller, Director of the Grange Insurance Audubon Center. Ms. Miller, please go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is LeAnn Miller, and I am the Center Director for the Grange Insurance Audubon Center, a conservation center of Audubon Great Lakes that provides environmental and outdoor education programs to the people who live and work in downtown Columbus, as well as everyone in central Ohio. Today, I am testifying on behalf of Green Insurance Audubon Center in Great Lakes to ask that the state legislator repeal House Bill 6, which is bad for birds, wildlife, and the people of Ohio. The Grange Insurance Audubon Center opened in 2009, and is the first nature center in the country to be built so close to the heart of a major city only one mile from downtown. As a sanctuary for bird and nature lovers, at the Grange Insurance Audubon Center, we recognize that energy efficiency and renewable energy are vital components to protecting birds and wildlife from the threat of climate change and ensuring that all Ohioans have access to safe and affordable energy. More than 400 birds can be found in our great state, along with countless other wildlife species. In addition to being important to Ohio's natural heritage, birds are important pollinators for agricultural industry, and the money that birdwatchers spend supports local businesses. Here in Ohio, some 2.4 million Ohioans watch birds, and 3.5 million wildlife watchers spent $2 billion in the state on equipment, supplies, and in one year. Science shows that climate change is by far the biggest threat to the survival of birds we love. A responsible renewable energy is vital to protecting wildlife and the places they need to thrive. Recent report by Audubon found that more than 2/3 of all Native American species that are threatened by climate change. That's not only a terrible loss for nature, but a detrimental impact to the economic health of the Ohio's communities. In 2008, Ohio made a commitment to reduce harmful emissions and propel our state and be economy that leads into the future. This was a big win for birds and wildlife. These critical renewable energy and energy efficiency standards were helping to reduce carbon emissions while delivering significant net benefits to consumers. House Bill 6 reversed its important progress and vetted the state's renewable energy and energy efficient programs. House Bill 6 has been called the worst energy policy in the country. It is not, it is not the investment in the health, in the clean and healthy future that Ohioans deserve. That's why we're calling for them to repeal House Bill 6. Thank you.
Thank you so much, LeAnn. We're happy you were able to join us tonight. Our next two speakers will be Dr. Alvin Kumpah and Mary Ann Gabel. Dr. Kumpah?
Hello, I'm Hal Kumpah, and I'm a retired professor from the University of Toledo, where I was distinguished university professor of physics emeritus. My residence is in Highland, Ohio. My main expertise is in solar and renewable energy, but I also have a strong background in nuclear and radiation physics. I appreciate this opportunity to speak against House Bill 6 and for the repeal of that unfortunate bill. Today, in my brief comments, I'll focus on the technical and environmental aspects of energy generation, including the nuclear physics of the reactors Davis-Bessey and Perry Nuclear Power Plants. Although 60 or 70 years ago, nuclear fission reactors were viewed as a tremendous advance and were promoted as giving us electricity that was too cheap to meter. However, today, nuclear reactors are an outdated and very expensive electricity generation technology. Unfortunately, for both Davis-Bessey and Perry, they neared the end of their 40-year design life, and the management of First Energy sought a 20-year license extension, which has been granted to Davis-Bessey. In spite of this, there are serious and increasing dangers associated with continuing to operate these nuclear power plants. We see daily increases in environmental and terrorist security threats related to the storage of vast quantities of spent fuel on site. All fuel that was used in Davis-Bessey over their 42 years still is stored on site. Contrary to the claims of the management of First Energy, electricity generated from nuclear power plants is not carbon-free. The process of uranium isotope enrichment and the mining, as well as the construction of massive power stations with thousands of tons of concrete and steel, lead to high carbon emissions. One of the harmful consequences of House Bill 6 not only was that it supported and subsidized nuclear power, was that it terminated the benefits that were established through Senate Bill 221, as LeAnn has already mentioned. One of the purposes of Senate Bill 221 was to incentivize advanced energies such as solar and renewable. In fact, this incentive, this objective, has been wildly successful for both wind and for solar. The cost of wind has come down by about a factor of 2 since 2008. The cost of solar has come down by more than a factor of 10 since 2008. In 2008, the price of a solar module was approximately $4 per peak watt, and today you can buy an improved solar panel for less than $0.40 per peak watt. Furthermore, much of the key development of solar modules has occurred actually in the state of Ohio by the company First Solar. It's located in northwest Ohio, and I had the pleasure of interacting with them as they were developing their technology. First Solar is now the U.S.'s largest manufacturer of solar modules. Their products accounted for about 20% of all solar installed electricity last year. Ohioans should be proud of this development, which is a tribute to the glass technology engineering expertise, manufacturing know-how present here in the state of Ohio, and particularly in northwest Ohio, right in the backyards of Davis-Bessey and Perry Nuclear Power Plants. In summary, Ohio legislators should recognize the amazing spirit of innovation and technical expertise that's present here in the state of Ohio and repeal HB 6. Secondly, I would argue that Ohio should be even more aggressive in supporting the development of renewables such as solar and wind, because they are the new technologies, they're advancing rapidly, and will provide clean and renewable electricity for some of the cheapest rates around. Let's leave a legacy for our children and grandchildren that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kumpah. We appreciate you being with us tonight. Next, we're going to hear from Mary Ann Gabel, who will be followed by Meg Brown. Mary Ann? Hope you are on mute, Mary Ann. There you go. Welcome.
Good evening. My father, Richard Dable, had a tubing company in Pennsylvania, which for years had a subsidiary plant in Wapakoneta, Ohio, and my father spent a good deal of time at that Ohio plant. My father's company had supply contracts for nuclear reactors, possibly the ones at issue in House Bill 6. But he loved nature, spent time deep in the outdoors, and above all, he was not crooked. I am ashamed on his behalf, when I think of what Larry Householder and Ohio's anti-clean energy legislators have done to advance House Bill 6 and stand in the way of energy policies needed to advance Ohio's clean energy future. Sluicing millions in corrupt corporate funding to get House Bill 6 passed, buying votes from legislators, undermining the legitimate public initiative that was asking to be heard through a ballot issue, and now refusing to hold public hearings that would require that the House Bill 6 movers, would require them to come clean and repeal House Bill 6. The political world is currently full of politicians refusing to reveal information relevant to their suspect decision-making. The public is entitled to ask and to hear from them. What are you hiding? Who are you hiding from? What are you afraid of, to be fighting so hard against the democratic processes that this nation and this state was founded on? At long last, have you no sense of shame? Hearings on House Bill 6 are the minimum that the people of Ohio are entitled to. Start them up. Repeal them, repeal House Bill 6. If he were alive today, my father, who invested in Ohio, would be standing here with me in agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. We appreciate you sharing that story with us. Next up, we're going to hear from Meg Brown, followed by Joseph Mayerana and Kathy Cohen Becker. Meg, thanks for joining us.
Hello. My name is Meg Brown, and I am an Ohioan and avid voter, and fervently against House Bill 6, and I appreciate the time to tell you why. House Bill 6 should have been struck down even before the corruption and bribery. With more than $1.3 billion being funneled from consumers to bail out F. Energy Harbor, the legislation has no requirement or promise that the plants will stay open or that employees would be protected. They could receive this money and still leave employees without jobs, with higher energies and all energy bills and all during an economic downturn. Not only that, but HB 6 charges electric customers more each month to bail out the Ovek Coal Mines, coal plants, that have been losing money for years in Kiger Creek, Ohio, and Clifton Creek, Indiana, but yet Ohio citizens have to pay. If they need a $1 billion bailout, how can they pay $61 million to bribe officials? First Energy and Energy Harbor have claimed the nuclear plants need a bailout, but they have refused to open their books. They have, however, committed the largest bribery money laundering scheme ever perpetrated against the people in the state of Ohio, a direct quote from U.S. Attorney David Devillers. "House Bill 6 was an unacceptable bill before the corruption and is unconscionable now, knowing the money laundering behind it. We must repeal House Bill 6 and support Ohioans and a healthier environment." Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Meg. We appreciate you being with us tonight. All right, our next speaker is going to be Joseph Mayerana, followed by Kathy Cohen Becker and Elizabeth McGinnis. Hi, good evening. Hello to you, too.
Say hi.
Hi.
Hello and good evening, Governor Dewine, Ohio senators, and congress members. We appreciate the opportunity to speak on House Bill 6. My name is Joe Mayerana. I'm an independent voter, small business owner in Westerville, Ohio, and father of a seven-year-old daughter named Nora.
Hi, my name is Nora.
Sorry, we're nervous. I implore you, as our elected state representatives and state senators, to actually represent us and not the big energy lobbyists from First Energy and Energy Harbor. The HB 6 bill doesn't represent Ohioans, as we had absolutely no say in passing this bailout. It's reprehensible that this bill hasn't been repealed already. This is truly a black eye for our elected officials and all Ohioans. How can First Energy justify forcing taxpayers to bail out failing coal and nuclear plants when they have millions of dollars to put their name on Cleveland Brown Stadium? For the sake of honesty, credibility, and all the hard-working people of Ohio, you must repeal this horribly corrupt HB 6 bill and actually represent Ohioans and not just corporate sponsors. Has Generation Now funneled money to you and your campaigns? I ask our state reps and state senators, how will history view your actions in light of this scandal? Will you do the right thing, or will you continue to be the driving force behind this swamp of corruption? Will you be remembered as Larry Householder's enablers, or stand up and be accountable to the folks that elected you? Since Jeff Longstreet and Juan Cespedes have pleaded guilty, what will they have to say about my elected officials Rick Carfagna and Andrew Brunner? This scandal will define your service. It's time to step up and put party politics aside for the benefit of Ohioans. We need leaders Bob Cupp, Larry Elkhoff, and Governor Dewine to lead and be accountable. We will be watching to see who has the courage to stand up for what's right and choose, and those that choose to embarrass our state further with this HB 6 bill. We want clean renewable energy and clean air to breathe.
We want clean, I want clean air to breathe.
Please repeal House Bill 6. Thank you.
Oh, Joe and Nora, thank you so much. You did a wonderful job. We're so glad you were with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to hear from Kathy Cohen Becker and then Elizabeth McGinnis. Hi, Kathy.
Hi, tough act to follow. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today about House Bill 6. My name is Kathy Cohen Becker, and for the last three years, I have led the All Volunteer Ready for 100 campaign in Columbus and Ohio. Ready for 100 is a campaign of the Sierra Club to ask cities to commit to 100% renewable energy. And so far, that includes 168 cities, including Cleveland, Cincinnati, Lakewood, and South Euclid. So, during the time I've led this campaign, we've seen a seismic shift towards renewable energy through Ohio's Community Choice Aggregation Program. So, in 2018, 3/4 of voters in Worthington approved electric aggregation for 100% renewable energy. Cincinnati has long been aggregated for 100% renewable, but until recently, that came from renewable energy certificates. But last year, the city signed a contract to buy power from the largest municipal solar array in the country. And this year, Columbus has put aggregation for 100% renewable on the ballot. And if that passes, it will create the largest aggregation program in the Midwest, with electricity supplied through 700 megawatts of wind and solar right here in Ohio. So, how is this relevant to HB 6? What these cities are doing is charting a path to a healthy, prosperous future, and I could not be more proud of them. What HB 6 did was anchor Ohio to a polluted and expensive past, financed on the backs of hard-working Ohio families through a $61 million bribery scheme to purchase the Ohio State House. Rarely does one find a real-life example of the stark contrast between good and evil, but we have that here in Ohio. House Bill 6 must be repealed. It's not tolerable to allow a law to stand that was opposed by the vast majority of Ohioans and passed only through the sheer brute force of corruption. What does it say about our state that even after this record-setting corruption was exposed for the world to see that the law it created is still on the books? Our lives, our nation, and our planet depend on us doing the right thing. We can either move towards the fastest-growing jobs in the country in renewable energy while cleaning our air and improving our health, or we can wallow in a polluted past while the planet's life-support systems that support human civilization and all life on Earth unravel before our eyes. And that sentence is not an exaggeration. That is what is happening. The choice could not be more apparent: repeal HB 6 and embrace a clean energy future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Thanks for joining us tonight. All right, next, we're going to hear from Elizabeth McGinnis and then Erin Dunbar, followed by Laurel Grass. Elizabeth?
Thanks. Hi, everyone. My name is Elizabeth, and I work at the Ohio State University. So, I was against HB 6 from the beginning, because I don't believe it's environmentally sound to continue backing nuclear or coal power. I don't think it's right for me or for any Ohioan to contribute our own money to bail out a failing, polluting industry. After the announcement of the extreme corruption linked to HB 6, it seems ridiculous that this issue is still being considered at all. It seems like it was a bad idea before, and now it's not only a bad idea, but it's a legal criminal idea. I think what's been so frustrating about living in this year is seeing how little regard it seems like politicians give to the long-term health of our nation. It's been frustrating. I work with a lot of college students, and I think that many young people that are losing hope in the system, and that politicians are more concerned with their own power or their own money, and not really concerned with the long-term health of the state or of the nation. So, like other people have mentioned, the environment is already at a crisis point, and this is just one more thing that would push it over the edge. So, I don't think that the nuclear power plant or the coal is worth the damage to the environment or the cost to Ohioans, especially in a time where so many people are struggling to make ends meet and pay their rent. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We appreciate you being with us tonight. All right, next, we're going to hear from Erin Dunbar, who will be followed by Laurel Grass.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, but we cannot see you.
That's what I'm trying to figure. Oh, here we go.
Okay. Oh, there you are.
Okay, my name is Erin Dunbar. I'm a climate change activist from Lowell, Ohio, and a leadership team member with Mid-Ohio Valley Climate Action. I'm also an autistic person, and I've taken a lot of inspiration from watching the global rise to prominence of Greta Thunberg, who is also autistic. Seeing her activism become so well-known has gotten me thinking a lot about my identity on the spectrum. And one interesting aspect of autistic personalities is a lot of us have a preoccupation with justice. We're often highly moral people and cannot stand the side of injustice. I remember as a kid, I was once told I exhibit what's known as hyper morality. And to this day, I can still look back on the most trivial things from my childhood that I might have done wrong, or if I've hurt someone's feelings, or anything like that. I can still look back on those things and like experience a pang of guilt for things I've done years ago that didn't amount to anything. So, it's from this perspective that I find myself just routinely baffled by the endless moral depravity of those in power and in decision-making positions, incentivized by nothing but obscene amounts of dirty money, to take murderous actions that are completely and utterly indefensible. We know, for instance, that ExxonMobil was aware of anthropogenic climate change, at least as early as the 1970s. The coal industry knew in the 1960s. And just this week, it was revealed that the automobile industry, companies like Ford and GM, knew back as far back as 50 years ago. Information like this is practically just unfathomable to me. I literally don't know if I can survive trying to deceive the public in this manner, knowing that my actions would be responsible for the deaths and displacement of hundreds of millions of people, making vast swaths of the world uninhabitable for generations to come. How, I wonder, can these monsters live with themselves? I get the same feeling when I think about legislation like HB 6, and the fact that anyone who considers themselves any kind of worthwhile human being can support such a travesty of a bill. With the dubious distinction of being called the worst energy bill of the 21st century, I doubt whether I need to go into details that I'm sure have already been covered in other testimonies. The bribery, the corruption, the bailouts for big polluters, and the attacks on clean energy at a time when the world's best climate scientists tell us that we have fewer than 10 years to prevent runaway catastrophic global warming. I'm not naive enough to think it's anything but a fool's errand to try and appeal to politicians' moral character, especially on an issue like climate change. Why, honest to God, cannot comprehend the brazenness, the sociopathic disregard for human life that it must take to continue selling out the health and safety of Ohioans, and indeed, the very survival of this planet and those who live on it, for the sake of greed. It's time to repeal HB 6, and well past time to hold those responsible for this and other crimes against humanity accountable for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Thanks for sharing with us tonight. Next, we're going to hear from Laurel Grass, who will be followed by Matt Smith.
I'm Laurel Grass from Guilford Township, Medina County in Ohio, and I'm a member of the Portage Trail Group of the Sierra Club. And our group has always been very involved in the energy and the clean energy industry. And I just can't understand why, after all the corruption that's been unveiled about House Bill 6 and about how these people have even been accused and convicted of crimes, that why a piece of legislation that they put forward is still in effect? And especially since it shores up some coal-fired plants that pollute the air. And I've heard a lot about how people who are circulating petitions to repeal House Bill 6 have been actually accosted, and they tried to intimidate them against circulating the petitions, and eventually, the petitions were turned down by the Secretary of State. So, the entire situation has been so unfair, that I think it's about time that the Ohio government would hurry up and repeal House Bill 6, especially since people are going to be charged extra money on their electric bills starting the 1st of next year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Laurel. Before we hear from Matt, I just want to remind folks that while tonight is our final scheduled public hearing, your voice still needs to be heard. We would urge anyone who would like to contact their lawmakers to do so by visiting www.repealhb6.com to send a digital letter to your state representative and senator, or you can leave a message for your lawmaker by calling them directly or calling the State House switchboard at 1-800-282-0253. All right, and with that, we will hear from Matt Smith.
I would like to join with my fellow Ohioans and give my voice for the citizens calling for the immediate repeal and replacement of House Bill six. I had contacted my legislators prior to House Bill six, as it was a bad bill from the beginning. Certainly, the one and a half billion bailout to Energy Harbor, who along with First Energy refused to open their books. We ended up with a bill that gutted our state's renewable energy mandates, elimination of energy efficiency programs, and certainly our goals. But the biggest thing was the legislative process was flawed in the beginning. There was no public input. Then we find out from the US Attorney that this became the product of the largest bribery money laundering scheme ever perpetrated against the state of Ohio. The Ohio bribery probe, looking at the nuclear plants that owner Energy Harbor, formerly First Energy Solutions, that was spun off and renamed after the Bank of Food Protection. The Wall Street Journal has noted the company has completed the bulk of an 800 million share repurchase program back to their investors, returning excess cash. Again, just the Wall Street investors that have taken control and then are behind the, along with First Energy, the money laundering coming into Speaker Larry Householder. With Mr. Householder's arrest and amid the bribery probe, certainly Ohio Governor Mike DeWine has also called for the repeal of the subsidy. But again, this legislative process of not allowing public participation. Ohio needs a comprehensive energy policy that continues to focus on energy efficiency, expanding clean energy development with incorporation of new distributed energy resources and the support for the communities that are affected by dirty energy generation. I'm a small business owner, family farm with a 25 kilowatt array. In our warehouse operation, we have used energy efficiency to reduce our lighting load and certainly go for energy starless equipment. I look to the future as an engineer. I note that the Smart Electric Power Alliance has an integrated distribution planning, a framework for the future, part of their white papers. But we need to abridge the existing technology gaps that we have and invest in fundamental grid improvements for the future planning. A phased framework outlining the transition from traditional to integrated distribution planning should be what our lawmakers should be doing. Again, I thank all the Environmental Council and Sierra Club and others for this. And I call on our legislators to immediately repeal HB six and open the process. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt, for your comments. We really appreciate you being with us tonight. Next, we're going to hear from Aria Wright, who will be followed by Patricia Morida. Welcome.
Hi. Hello, I'm Aria Wright, a fellow with Alliance for Climate Education, or ACE for short. I was born and raised in Warren, Ohio. Did you know that the Aaron Mahoney Valley, my nearest metropolitan area, fluctuates so much that we have to check often what the air quality is like? This type of certainty with the safety of our air can be scary if not taken care of. This personally takes a toll on me and my family. Not only are me and my siblings athletes, my grandmother has breathing problems as well. It is a reality that my grandmother, just going to look at the flowers in her front yard, can potentially put her at more risk. Being that us kids and young adults are the future for this world, how are we supposed to put trust in our legislative process? House Bill six was said to be a clean energy bill. It is not. It was said that the bill will save consumers money. It does not. However, House Bill six passed on the back of hardworking Ohioans, now costing consumers more than $1.5 billion and costing us Ohioans jobs. Altogether, stripping away efficiency and clean energy programs that had the potential to continue to improve Ohio's environment. You're risking lives just to benefit First Energy and its shareholders. What we need to be doing is putting those dollars back into clean energy, clean air programs and stop lining the pockets of wealthy, dirty executives and big Wall Street investors. This bill needs to be repealed. We see that Mr. Larry Householder is being held accountable, but are those remaining legislators going to take responsibility and make sure nothing like this happens again? Lastly, Mr. Bob Cupp, what are, what are you going to do as our new elected House Speaker? As our new elected House Speaker, what are you going to do to repeal House Bill six and give us our justice? Thank you.
Thank you, Aria. We really appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, next we are going to hear from Patricia Morida, who will be followed by Dawn Busilachi. Hi, Pat.
Okay, I'm unmuted. All right, very good. Okay, well, my name's Patricia Morida. I chair the Ohio Sierra Club Nuclear Free Committee. The HB six issue is now not about the need for energy. It's about a corrupt political system behind the absurd portrayal of need from a company that received over $9 billion in stranded costs as Ohio's utilities were deregulated. And now, 20 years later, First Energy has seemingly squandered that and wants more billions, saying they cannot compete in the so-called free market that they lobbied for. As nuclear chair, I'm going to lay out just one of the reasons, area of reasons why it's insanity to keep Ohio's two nuclear reactors in operation. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission is giving waivers and deferrals to First Energy, which is now Energy Harbor, on inspection standards, maintenance, repairs, upgrades, and other regulations. One, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission has neglected to update US nuclear regulations to meet the International Atomic Energy Agency recommendations. Two, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission has not required any nuclear plants to implement the recommendations from the lessons learned from Fukushima. Three, this month, Ohio, October 2020, in an amazing sleight of hand, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission proposed to extend the expiration date of Perry's operating license for over a year. Number four, this year, 2020, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission has given even further maintenance exemptions from all nuclear plants due to the coronavirus. Reactors are now allowed to run with fewer staff working much longer shifts and continuing for many years, deferral of fire hazard upgrades for First Energy, for all the nuclear plants. My written report, I have 28 links to recent Nuclear Regulatory Commission exemptions that were granted to First Energy. I just want to end by noting the thin canisters that contain high-level waste at the reactors. They're only five eighths inch thick and cannot be inspected, maintained, or repaired. And the high burn-up fuel that they're using now is burned longer and at hotter temperatures, so it takes much longer to cool. So dealing with all this waste is going to be a huge, huge problem for the future. And thank you very much for hearing my testimony and you know that I support repeal of House Bill six.
Thanks, Patricia, for being with us and sharing your remarks tonight. We appreciate it. All right, next we will hear from Dawn Busilachi, followed by Drake Dew and Connie Klein. Hi, dear.
Hi. Hi, I'm just trying to get my notes up here. Oh, give me one moment. There we go. I'm Dawn Busilachi. I'm testifying to support the repeal of House Bill six. I'd like to tell you a story. My husband and I had solar panels installed on our home in New Jersey in 2005, and we contributed electricity to the grid. We were able to do this because of subsidies which supported alternative energy and efficiency. Fast forward to July 2012, we had moved to Ohio. It was over 100 degrees outside and the derecho had just struck, damaging Granville and costing millions of dollars. I attended Ohio State's Environmental Science Graduate Program, where I learned scientists continue to link intense and destructive weather events to climate change. The evidence was becoming undeniable and personal. By 2015, my husband and I were helping folks in Granville install their own solar systems with panels made in the United States. These systems sent locally-produced electricity to the grid, helping to stabilize it. When HB six proposed repealing energy efficiency standards, I called my Ohio representative to oppose this. These standards had helped me reduce my energy costs and coal emissions. However, my representative supported repealing the standards and he accepted contributions from fossil fuel interests. In 2019, I saw commercials on TV which claims the Chinese were taking over our energy grid. I knew this was a lie and that dark money groups involved in the effort to stop the repeal of HB six were not transparent. I wasn't surprised utilities benefiting from HB six subsidies donated $1.65 million to Ohio politicians. Now, I am being forced to bail out two coal-fired power plants. Emissions from coal-fired power plants had contaminated the fisheries in New Jersey years before I moved to Ohio and took away my fish. I am being forced to subsidize this free dumping and disgusting state of affairs. To proponents of HB six, I say, do not claim to support jobs because alternative energy and efficiency standards create jobs. Do not pretend you are concerned about cost to consumers because I've already saved money by efficiency standards. Unless you repeal HB six, claim to be what you are, hypocrites. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. We appreciate you being with us tonight. All right, next we're going to hear from Drake Dew, followed by Connie Klein.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Drake Dew and I'm a fellow with the Alliance for Climate Education. I grew up just 30 minutes south of Cleveland, ranked as the ninth most polluted city in the entire United States for year-round particle pollution. Pollution that taints the air I'm breathing in right now as I speak. For these problems, we turn to our elected officials in the hopes that they will solve our concerns, that they will represent our struggles, that they will advocate for our livelihoods. Instead, our elected officials have taken part in a multimillion-dollar bribery scandal inspired by a company that lied about needing a bailout in the first place. Politicians often pride themselves in how they fight for the red, the white, and the blue. But for the former leader of Ohio's House of Representatives, he seems to only fight for the green. The money that lines his pocket from bribery, the money siphoned from the backs of hard-working Ohioans, the money squandered on a billion-dollar bailout for a company that has betrayed the trust of our politicians and our people. And after all this, many politicians have the audacity to claim that investing into clean energy, that protecting our children's future would cost too much money. I want to flip that narrative on its head. How much more money are we going to waste on bribery? How much more money are we going to waste on legislation like House Bill six? I ask every one of those politicians, if you are truly concerned about cost, stand against House Bill six, but more than that, repeal it. Our government is one of the people, by the people, and for the people. But when our elected leaders entrusted with our faith pass legislation corrupted by the influence of bribery, our government is anything but for the people. Please repeal House Bill six.
Thank you, Drake. We really appreciate those powerful words and you being with us tonight. Next, we're going to hear from Connie Klein, who will be followed by David Klebenow and Pastor Dean Van Fero.
I'm kind of...
No, no, you're muted. You're okay.
Oh, we can hear you. You're good.
Okay. I'm Connie Klein. I was the former Sierra Club Ohio Nuclear Chair. So that committee is in good hands now with, with Pat Morida. I call House Bill six "the poison process and the poison policy." Contrary to industry propaganda, nuclear power is not indispensable. In both 2018 and 2019, grid operator PJM determined that closing Perry and Davis Bessie would not destabilize the grid. Nuclear power is not carbon-free, as one of the, a couple of the speakers have said. Reactors emit greenhouse gases like methane and radioactive carbon-14. Experts like Dr. Benjamin Savical conclude that the nuclear life cycle emits more greenhouse gases per kilowatt hour than all renewables. Carbon emissions are twice those of solar photovoltaic and six times more than wind or energy efficiency. Nuclear power is not clean. A 1,000-megawatt reactor contains as much long-lived radiation as 1,000 Hiroshima-sized bombs. US reactors have produced 88,000 tons of waste. They routinely leak and release deadly carcinogens and mutagens. There is no safe dose or threshold of radiation exposure. Nuclear power is not safe. Dr. Gregory Jasco, the former Nuclear Regulatory Commission Chair, warns, quote, "I oversaw the US nuclear power industry. Now I think it should be banned. The danger from climate change no longer outweighs the risks of nuclear accidents like the Three Mile Island, Chernobyl, and Fukushima accidents that we've already experienced. No private insurers cover accidents. The government estimates a serious accident could cost $728 billion, but covers only $12.6 billion. Nuclear power is not economical. Perry and Davis Bessie cost $9 billion and counting. Ohioans strongly prefer solar, wind, and efficiency, oppose reactor subsidies, and want House Bill six repealed. Ohio must strengthen renewables and efficiency, phase out and close Perry and Davis Bessie, and retrain workers in renewable energy jobs. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Thanks to Citizen Action."
Thank you, Connie. We really appreciate you being with us tonight. All right, next we're going to hear from David Klebenow, followed by Pastor Dean Van Fero.
Hi, Tracy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to lawmakers.
David, I'm going to interrupt you and let you know that you're sideways.
All right, give me a moment. Let me try and fix that.
Ah, there you go. Much better.
Better? Give me a moment.
Much better. Thank you.
Okay, we'll try that again. So thank you very much for the opportunity to talk. I'm, I'm actually speaking on behalf of our congregation. It's Congregation Beth Adon in, outside Cincinnati, Ohio, Loveland, Ohio, actually. We are a congregation of about 250 members and I am part of our social justice committee. So I'll just read a statement that we prepared. "Congregation Beth Adon's core values are based on human dignity and ethical behavior. We are committed to repair the world through responsible actions that value each other and our planet. It is because of these values we are pleased to hear and fully support Governor DeWine's call for the repeal of HB six, but we caution it not be hastily replaced without consideration of the effects on the environment, human health, and innovation. HB six put the short-term interests of power utilities before the interests of Ohioans. At Congregation Beth Adon, we take seriously our responsibility to repair and improve the environment. Short-term interests should never be given the priority over the safety, the security of our children's future. Thank you."
David, thank you. We really appreciate your comments tonight. Next, we're going to hear from Pastor Dean Van Fero, who is joining us via video. After we see the video, we will hear from Dr. Randy Pacladnik.
Hi, my name is Dean Van Faro and I'm a resident of Cleveland, Ohio. And I wanted to share during this public hearing for the repeal of HB six. So the first thing I'd like to say is that when my children cheat on a test, they get a failing grade, they get docked, they get a punishment of some sort. This bill came about through massive cheating, probably the greatest corruption, cheating... cheating that has happened in Ohio's history to the tune of $60 million. And so it came about through illicit means and it should be taken away just for that reason alone. Number two, we were told by First Energy Solutions that the nuclear power plants that this bill props up were behind in terms of the money. First Energy said they didn't have the money to keep them open, when in fact, we find out after the bill is passed that indeed they did have the money. And, and so that's the second reason why this bill should be repealed. A third reason is that we need to support wind and solar. This bill, HB six, didn't have any new, it restricts any new wind or solar projects from receiving state money. And that's just wrong. We know that there are 12 times more jobs in the renewable energy sector than in fossil fuel-generated jobs. That's for 2019 statistics. So these are jobs that are going away. These are jobs that cause air pollution. These are jobs that take away the economic benefits of renewable energy. So those are the three reasons that I wanted to share for the repeal of HB six. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Pastor Dean, for sending that video along. Okay, next we will hear from Dr. Randy Pkladnik, followed by Dave Simons and Dave Trout. Are we able to get Dr. Pkladnik? I believe she is joining us by phone. We'll just give it one moment.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Thanks so much.
Okay, sorry, I'm calling in from rural Harrison County, Ohio, where the internet is sketchy at best. My name's Dr. Randy Pkladnik and I'm a member of the Ohio Valley Environmental Coalition. I'm a member of Concern Ohio River Residents and the Mid Ohio Valley Climate Action and I'm also a trainer for Climate Reality. My husband and I have an 8.4-kilowatt solar system on our house. Part two in the continuing trail of lies of HB six is now underway. For First Energy, it was a great investment for Ohio's citizens. It was another example of how Ohio's politicians have done everything in their power to stop renewable energy from getting anywhere in our state. HB six was passed even though countless citizens, environmental groups, and renewable energy companies came out against it. This bill effectively cuts Ohio's energy portfolio and discourages green energy from coming to our state. It also does away with energy efficiency standards, a sector that provides 80,000 jobs in the state. The passage of this bill and Governor Derine's subsequent signing came as no surprise. A dark money group backing First Energy spent 9.5 million in television ads and the Columbus Dispatch reported it got a good return on its investment. Sadly, according to a 2017 U.S. Energy Information Association report, Ohio ranks 49 out of 50 in the nation for solar and wind production. Ohio's renewable energy standards pale in comparison to some states that are already pledged to 100% renewables by 2045, states such as California, Washington, New Mexico, Maine, and Washington, DC. A recent article by Inside Climate News states that seeing the anti-renewable sentiment in Ohio, renewable jobs and projects will go to neighboring states such as Michigan. Even South Carolina and Georgia are more forward-thinking when it comes to renewable energy. Ohio's taxpayers will be paying for bad decisions made by First Energy. The bill was never intended to be about clean energy or staving off the climate crisis. Ohio should be investing in renewable energy, energy efficiency, and training for our students to work in the green energy sector and green energy technology. Once again, Ohio's politicians put the possibility of a thriving green energy future for the state on the back burner as they sold out to the industries padding their campaign bank accounts. When the world is on fire, Ohio's politicians and energy regulators continue to sit back and deny the citizens of the state the opportunities to be afforded by green energy. It is time to repeal HB six and move Ohio into the energy future. Thank you very much for allowing me to give my testimony.
Thank you, Dr. Pkladnik. We appreciate you battling technology to be with us tonight. Next, we're going to hear from Dave Simons, who will be followed by Dave Trout and Kevin Camps. Dave?
Good evening. Thank you for having me speak tonight. My fellow enviros and NAIO legislators, speak, listening. I'm Dave Simons. I'm the current CR Club Ohio Chapter Energy Committee Chair. Truly, it is unbelievable that FBI busting the Ohio Legislature has not already overturned the blatant corruption, which is over the top even by Ohio standards. Have they no shame? That was rhetorical. Of course not. They don't fear the voters since Citizens United gave Republicans a supermajority, locked in by the most aggressively sophisticated gerrymandering ever seen anywhere. Others have already waxed eloquent about full repeal of HB six and of course, I insist on that too. It should not take a threat of not being elected to do the only honorable right thing. The notorious bribers should obviously get their dirty subsidies removed. Kill coal now. However, I must comment on the return of weak standards for energy efficiency and renewable energy. Restoration of the former standards would yield no efficiency gains because the utilities have already met the revised target, though there is a vast amount of cost-effective efficiency left sitting on the table. And the renewable energy standard was meh back in 2008 when it passed unanimously before Citizens United. At only 20, 12 and a half percent, it is way below what is needed to meet Ohio's responsibility to the United Nations 2018 IPCC report that requires a 50% cut in carbon emitted from all sources by 2030 and 100% of all carbon emitted by 2050 at climate catastrophe. So, my fellow enviros, we need newly revised standards of at least 2% per year efficiency gains through 2035 and at least 50% renewables on the grid by 2030. We also need to add a category for energy storage, which we may need by around 2025. I'm asking for a united position to be put forward and publicized as part of a transformative energy plan for Ohio. It's the least we can do for our own souls, for our children's lives, and for our responsibilities to all other humans and to the whole of life on earth. I know the legislature won't pass it and the governor won't sign it. We still need to put forward a realizable vision of a bright, clean energy future to rally all Ohioans around. General Motors has announced that they will be at 100% renewables for all their needs, including powering all their many power-hungry factories by 2030. They have also bought into a fully electric transportation system for all light vehicles and full integration with the new grid. General Motors is also making all their suppliers go through the same process. For God's sake, if General Motors can do it, surely Ohio can too. Especially if they expect General Motors and most other big corporations to stay in Ohio. I also want to mention that when we take the reins on January 21st, 2021, we will be implementing the Biden Climate Plan, the most far-reaching, boldest plan to tackle the climate crisis and supercharge the American economy that has ever been put forward by any party. I have dropped a link in the chat and also a link to my own email. To gladden your heart and prepare your role in the coming year, please read it. I'm putting the link in the chat now and my email. Reach out to coordinate and good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We appreciate your comments tonight. Next, we're going to hear from Dave Trout, followed by Kevin Camps. There you are. Oh, Dave, we can't hear you. Hold on just one second. Do you want to try again? Want to try it again? Oh, now you can't hear me. All right, well, doesn't look like you're connected to your audio. Oh, I can't. I'm so sorry. All right, well, maybe we give Dave just a moment and we come back. And in the meantime, we'll hear from Kevin Camps. Don't go anywhere, Dave.
Hello.
Hi, Kevin. Oh, we can hear you. Wonderful.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Kevin Camps and I serve as Radioactive Waste Specialist at Beyond Nuclear. We're based in Washington, DC. But I'm making these comments on behalf of our members and supporters in Ohio. I'm also a board member of Don't Waste Michigan. So, the pillaging of Ohio pocketbooks, the robbery of ratepayers, is very significant. I remember attending a PUCO in-person hearing in Akron, literally across the street in the shadows of First Energy's headquarters building back in 2014, 2015. And two of the speakers there really broke my heart. A single mom and a college student, both of who said that if their electricity bill went up anymore, that they would be made homeless by this. And so many of our groups fought against the PUCO version of the bailout successfully for years and years on end. So instead, First Energy simply bribed the Ohio State Legislature to get their bailout. And while all that economic impact is very significant, what I want to focus on in my short two minutes is the safety, environmental, and health risks of operating a reactor like Davis Bessie any longer. But for the bailout, Davis Bessie would have retired as planned on Earth Day 2017, the expiration of its 40-year license. And that would have been a very good thing because Davis Bessie has had more close calls with catastrophe than any other reactor in the United States and perhaps the world. To compound that problem, Davis Bessie has a severely cracked containment structure and in addition, has experimental steam generators in place at this point. So I just want to share with you a Nuclear Regulatory Commission report from 1982. It's entitled "Crack II", which is short for "calculation of reactor accident consequences." It's also known as the 1982 Sandia Siding Study or NUREG CR 2239. So this report looked at what happens if there's a meltdown at Davis Bessie? What would the casualties be? What would the property damages be? And it predicted up to 1,400 peak early fatalities downwind of a meltdown at Davis Bessie. That's acute radiation poisoning. It predicted 73,000 peak early radiation injuries. It predicted 10,000 peak latent cancer deaths. And it predicted $84 billion in property damage. But as the AP reported in 2011, post Fukushima, in a series entitled "Aging Nukes", populations have soared around atomic reactors like Davis Bessie since 1982. So those horrific casualty figures would be significantly higher now. And when adjusted for inflation alone, Davis Bessie's property damage figure would be $225 billion in year 2019 figures. So given such risks and now the revelations of massive political corruption that secured the bailout, Davis Bessie's life support plug should be pulled and the dangerous reactor retired before the worst happens. After closure, the priority should be a just transition for the Davis Bessie workforce and the host communities, as well as comprehensive radiological cleanup of the contamination during the safest possible decommissioning. And last but not least, safe and secure containment of the highly radioactive irradiated nuclear fuel is required in order to protect Lake Erie and the Great Lakes basin downstream. Hardened onsite or near-site storage is a policy position endorsed by more than 200 environmental organizations in all 50 states, including the CR Club and the Toledo Coalition for Safe Energy. Thank you very much.
Kevin, thank you. We appreciate it. So for those of you who are listening in tonight, while tonight is our final scheduled public hearing, your voice does still need to be heard. We would urge anyone who would like to contact their lawmakers to do so by visiting www repealthb6.com to send a digital letter to your representative and senator, or you can leave a message for your lawmakers by calling them directly or calling the State House switchboard at 1-800-282-0253. We are still having some problems with Dave's audio, so we are going to move forward with Samara Vines, who will be followed by Ted Berg and Ruth Hardy.
Hi, my name is Samara Vines. I'm a fellow with Alliance for Climate Change, ACE for short. I grew up and go to school in the heart of Akron, Ohio. The air quality isn't always the best, so bad I even have to check before I go on runs. The AQI even gets to highs of 100, which is moderate and unhealthy for a certain group of people, especially as the heat rises. One of the qualities I adore the most is honesty. Anyone who is willing to lie, cheat, and be dishonest when the lives of others are at risk shouldn't be an official and isn't fighting for my future or the future of others. Every day I question our officials thinking about my generation growing up. Having to live in an unhealthy environment takes many tolls on a teenage body. It has made me very angry hearing about the House Bill six scheme. This scheme is nauseating and seeing that $61 million is enough to put 11.6 Ohioans' health at risk is repulsive. Our politicians need to do better and think about my future and the future of others. Every, everything about the House Bill six lie. First Energy has lied and bribed people to be in this position. House Bill six should be gone. Elders and younger people in the community are being put in harm's way because of the air as well. My little sister, only 13 years old, has had her athletic career cut short due to her bad asthma. Sometimes so bad she can't even go do basic things outside because of the air quality. Same with my grandma, my grandmother who immigrated all the way to the United States from the Philippines. She has had bad asthma, but it has only gotten worse, worse since being in the United States. The bill is untrustworthy, untrustworthy and is a ticking time bomb for many lives. It kills renewable energy and energy efficiency investments in Ohio. This is devastating for our community and the climate change community and causes danger for our lives. This is not clean energy, nor is it an honest bill. It is harming our state, our renewable energy, and our health. Imagine in 20 years if this bill is in place. Would our air be safe? Will lives be lost? Hopefully, seeing how this scheme played out, our elected officials can do better and be better examples for our fellow citizens. We're counting on you and we need your help to ensure my future is long and not cut short due to unhealthy air coming to my system. We need this bill gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Samara. We appreciate you being with us tonight and sharing your story. Next, we're going to hear from Ted Berg, followed by Ruth Hardy. Hi, Ted. Welcome.
Thank you. Am I okay to go?
You're good to go.
Good, thank you. My name is Ted Berg. I'm from Cincinnati, Ohio. I'm the retired CEO of Catholic Charity Southwest in Ohio and a member of the Pacha Mama Alliance. Or this testimony is my personal testimony tonight. The discredited Ohio HB six should be repealed and replaced. HB six is not a clean energy bill and it kills renewable energy and energy efficiency investment in Ohio. Once HB six is repealed, Ohio must enact a real clean energy policy through an open and transparent process. Ohio only generates 2% of its electricity from renewable energy compared with 18% national average. And Ohio generates 82% of its electricity from fossil fuels compared to a 62% national average. HB six looks backward through a bailout of obsolete technology to damage the environment and the economy. Electricity from solar and wind is less expensive than fossil fuels, even without adding in the high cost of pollution. Burning fossil fuels emits carbon dioxide, sulfur dioxide, and nitrogen oxide that cause climate change, ozone, acid rain, nutrient pollution in waters, bodies, and can cause asthma or respiratory infections to children, the elderly, pre-existing conditions in low-income neighborhoods. Fossil fuel extraction, fracking, and coal mining. Fossil fuel extraction, fracking and coal mining and transport add another level of environmental degradation and damage not considered in the cost of electricity. Natural gas is 95% methane and methane is 84 times more potent than carbon and global warming. All major companies have a carbon neutral goal in the next five to 30 years. We've heard about GM and IKEA and Apple are also going to carbon neutral by 2030. Ohio should look forward to supply renewable energies and attract these companies and jobs. An Ohio University study in 2020 shows that an increase in utility scale solar in Ohio will create jobs, economic impact and tax revenues. Repeal of the discredited HB6 and enacting a true clean energy policy through a fully transparent process will limit environmental damage, grow the economy and improve health in Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ted. We appreciate you being with us tonight. Next, we're going to hear from Ruth Hardy, followed by Ariel Miller and Anne Schuler.
Ruth Hardy, I'm from Cincinnati. Unquestionably, House Bill 6 was passed utilizing fraud, corruption and deceit.
Ruth, I can't see you. Do you want to turn your camera on?
Can't seem to do it.
There you are. We can see you now.
Okay. Unquestionably, House Bill 6 was passed utilizing fraud, corruption and deceit. But it was a terrible bill from its inception. The Senate's Energy and Public Utilities Committee proudly called House Bill 6 "balanced". But if Ohio ratepayers are forced to shore up two thoroughly corrupt and dismanaged nuclear plants, two polluting and failing coal plants and kiss our successful energy efficiency and renewable standards goodbye, that's like a restaurant server saying, here's your balanced dinner. Only one-third is poison, one-third is shoddy and overpriced. And we decided not to give you the other third. Will that be cash or credit? During the hearings for this bill, legislators heard expert testimony from scientists, environmentalists, economists and other informed constituents. But the extremely valuable information they offered was apparently dismissed in favor of input from industry lobbyists. For over a decade, I and my colleagues have written, called and met with our legislators to discuss energy and environmental issues and were always politely blown off. But the majority of their reports we cited have proven to be accurate over time. Ohio is facing not only an extreme pandemic crisis and associated economic crisis, it is facing a security threat that will make the pandemic pale in comparison. The security threat, as characterized by the US Joint Chiefs of Staff, is the climate crisis. Ohio's legislative bodies must pull their heads out of the sand, listen to all your constituents and get serious about a rapid transition away from fossil fuels by crafting an energy policy that focuses on renewable energy and energy efficiency and invests in the energy of tomorrow, builds a workforce of tomorrow and creates the innovative and sustainable economy of tomorrow. We must begin by repealing House Bill 6 and starting over with new legislation. Thanks for allowing me to testify.
Oh, thank you, Ruth. We're glad you were able to be with us tonight. Okay, next we're going to hear from Ariel Miller, followed by Anne Schuler and Johnny Kuprianis.
Chairman Hoops, Vice Chair Abrams, Ranking Member Leland and members of the House Select Committee on Energy Policy and Oversight. My name is Ariel Miller. I'm asking you urgently today to repeal House Bill 6. I speak as a Christian and member of the Episcopal Diocese of Southern Ohio's Leadership Team for Becoming Beloved Community, the nationwide quest by the Episcopal Church to bring about racial reconciliation and justice. Ohio has an affordable housing crisis that is about to become a catastrophe because of the pandemic. This includes utility shut-offs. In my city, we have the ninth highest energy burden for African-Americans of the 48 major cities in the United States. 16 of our census tracts fall into the category of energy poverty. Before House Bill 6, our state had saved consumers $4.5 billion in energy costs between 2009 and 2019 through the energy efficiency programs that House Bill 6 has killed. Money spent on energy efficiency also generated thousands of good jobs in Ohio as well. But House Bill 6 takes money out of ratepayers' pockets to prop up investors who've stuck with nuclear and coal-fired generation, which are no longer competitive in the free market. Before House Bill 6 was passed by bribery, the state was pulling us together to invest in programs that reduced poor people's monthly utility bills through weatherization and more efficient lighting. You are public servants elected to protect Ohioans as winter approaches and utility shut-offs loom. Your failure to act is bleeding $1.3 billion from ratepayers to send to Energy Harbor. Why not save state taxpayers' money by repealing House Bill 6 now? So Attorney General Yost can drop his lawsuit against Energy Harbor. Then, once you've put an end to a terrible piece of corruption-fueled policy, you should start public hearings to ensure a fair process in which all points of view can be heard, enabling you to build a state energy policy that will truly serve the public, both in economic stability and health. That's your mission. Many of us are praying for you and your work that you be just leaders who restore trust and accountability to Ohio's government. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move ahead one. I think we may have had some technical difficulties with Anne. So we are moving forward to Johnny Kuprianis. And after that, we will hear from Brian Schmidt.
Hello. My name is Johnny. I'd like to thank all the other speakers tonight for their moving testimonies, as well as the Coalition for putting together this opportunity to urge our state government to repeal House Bill 6. I was born and raised in Mason, Ohio, but I've been fortunate to work around the world. And these experiences have put me in contact with some of the many ways humanity has changed our environment. In China, I saw the exaggerated effects of unclean power sources like coal and natural gas. Before going outside, I had to check to make sure the air was safe to breathe. On some days, as the elderly walked their grandchildren to school, a brown haze filled the city, obscuring the sun. In France, the strong odor of diesel fumes and the chronic din of the associated combustion engines plagued the streets. I have also, however, seen the great strides these countries have made in response to this dire situation. France has invested millions in building more renewable power sources to upgrade the energy efficiency of homes and to electrify transportation. China is making an extraordinary effort as well, planting millions of trees to fight desertification and leading the world in solar manufacturing. In my 18 months in Beijing, I saw their extensive public transport system begin changing into an electrified fleet that didn't churn out dark clouds of exhaust. But to come back to Ohio's House Bill 6, it is my hope that our state government will not ignore the wishes of regular Ohioans in order to please moneyed interests. I speak today as one of the many young Ohioans who want to feel secure and not helpless when looking toward Ohio's future. The coal industry is owed a measure of gratitude for the electricity and the wages this has generated in the past. But it is time to invest in a healthier, cheaper and more sustainable future. Ohio's green energy targets should not be dropped from a pitiful 12.5 to an abysmal 8% or less of the state's power generation. And this is why Representative Roman Shucks HB 772 is not a viable replacement for House Bill 6. Fossil fuels may save money now, but they cost more in the long term, both in terms of dollars and human lives. Renewables, on the other hand, require immediate investment for the long-term benefits of clean air, good jobs, cheap electricity and a stable climate. 80% of Ohio's voters support repeal of HB6, according to a poll from Clout Research. Over 60% support stronger legislation to address climate change, according to Climate Nexus. And from the same poll, 76% of respondents want renewables to generate all of our state's energy by 2050. Many Ohioans already know that our current climate goals are far too low, but the youth especially. This is not an issue that is going to go away. HB6 will be repealed or Ohio will fail to thrive for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Very well said. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight. Next, we're going to hear from Brian Schmidt, who will be followed by Marilyn Wall and Susan Carlson. Brian?
Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Brian Schmidt. I'm the event chair for the Dayton Chapter of Climate Reality. And I have campaigned for Ohio Citizen Action in the past. For me, the issue is simple. A privatization of our power is the underlying disease. Householder and his connections, backdoor scheming was just a symptom. Not only should policy shift to transparency and public ownership, but the need for subsidized solar and wind is so ignored. It's not just a shame, it's sickening that we haven't made the national agenda priority combating climate change, as well as making Ohio's policy priority combating climate change. Windmills on Lake Erie. Why not? Money. So subsidize it. Texas does it for oil drilling investments, borrows billions of federal money for it. What is stopping other states from going solar? The reliance on a rigid barricading capitalist system, which is currently hindering and delaying our transition to green independence. I have estimated through my research that 1,186 gigawatts of green energy in the USA is possible from offshore wind, wave power, solar canopies over parking lots, some geothermal and a bit of biomass. 1,186 gigawatts exceeds the 2018 power consumed in the USA. 7.37 gigawatts can come from 1,229 windmills on Lake Erie spaced at seven times their blade diameter. I must quickly digress that sustainable hydrogen fuel made from corn husks, stalks and other zero-waste resources is the solution for the transportation needs of our future had by, in my mind, a public-owned manufacturer of hydrogen vehicles, fuel and logistics. The HB6 scandal is not solved by more quote "clean coal" or more nuclear, no matter how cutting-edge. Nuclear nor coal do not produce jobs like renewable diversity can. If not for saving our planet, save our economy by going green. Now, not later. Start by a full repeal of HB6. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We're glad you were able to be with us tonight. Next, we will hear from Marilyn Wall, who will be followed by Susan Carlson and Linda Sikora. Marilyn, you're on mute.
Didn't work.
There you are.
Well, thank you for holding this public hearing. Two individuals have now pled guilty in the bribery, corruption and racketeering scandal that led to the passage of HB6 and the defeat of the referendum that would have allowed the public to vote on this coal and nuclear bailout and the repeal of clean energy standards. HB6 must now be completely repealed. Ohio must not allow any bill passed by bribery to stand. HB6 was bad legislation from the beginning. Bailing out old, failing, uneconomical nuclear and coal plants is not in the best of interest of Ohioans of clean air or clean energy. It's not in the interest of public health or the environment of jobs or our pocketbooks or our futures. These new plants need to be shut down now, not bailed out. The legislature's failure to repeal this bill rewards corruption, hurts the state's economy and the environment. The legislature needs to clean house and repeal HB6 completely. Thank you again for holding this hearing.
Thank you, Marilyn. We're glad you were able to join us. Next, we will hear from Susan Carlson, followed by Linda Sikora and Melissa English.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. And as a citizen greatly concerned about climate change and the protection of our environment for future generations, I was appalled when I heard the news about the tactics and corruption used to pass House Bill 6. While multiple bills to repeal House Bill 6 have been introduced in the House Select Committee on Energy Policy and Oversight, they have held no public hearings and have announced that they will not meet until further notice. They have taken no action to repeal House Bill 6. I have communicated my concerns to the committee chair, Representative Hoops and his office, three times to express my concern and ask his stance on the repeal of this bill since the news broke to the public. I have received no response. While I always wish to assume the best intent in our legislators, it seems the only explanation for this gaping hole in response is that the leadership of this committee is in favor of holding back the repeal of this corrupt bill of legislation. Ohio lawmakers need to demonstrate that the state house is not for sale and repeal House Bill 6 now. As for my concerns about our environment and the one that my grandchildren will live in, House Bill 6 is not a clean energy bill. It wiped out the provisions for renewable energy and energy efficiency investment in Ohio. Legislators who voted to bail out some of the region's dirtiest coal plants were not interested in reducing carbon emissions with their vote. Prior to COVID-19, over 114,000 Ohioans worked in clean energy. There are jobs to be had in clean energy and the potential remains to draft new legislation that opens up the field to alternative energy sources. But we cannot do this until House Bill 6 is repealed. Representative Cedric Denson, representative of my district here in Cincinnati, has come out forcefully for repeal of this bill, but he can't do this alone. I call upon the House Select Committee on Energy and Policy Oversight to schedule and hold hearings that give us Ohio citizens the opportunity to make our voices heard. Ohioans were and are overwhelmingly opposed to House Bill 6. Please stop protecting this morally unjust piece of legislation and start the process of repeal now. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Susan. Thanks for being with us tonight. Next, we will hear from Linda Sikora.
Hi, I'm Linda Sikora, Conservation Chair. Whoops, shut my video, sorry.
There you are.
I'm Linda Sikora, Conservation Chair for Sierra Club Ohio. I'm also a lifelong Ohioan and am testifying as an individual. Last year, I hid in a grocery store from thugs paid by my utility company to accost me as I exercised my First Amendment rights, petitioning to reverse House Bill 6. My situation reminded me of stories I had heard about life in Russia when I was a child. I was far from alone in being attacked for petitioning. And that wasn't the only time I was accosted. And I feel as though our government is condoning this treatment of citizens by not repealing House Bill 6. As 14-year-old Amira McDuffie testified on Tuesday, they have put their own profits above human lives. And as Akshay Singh noted, if First Energy can afford $60 million in bribes, they don't need to have their hands in our pockets. House Bill 6 also financially impacts all Ohioans in that our state economy will now lag behind more enlightened states that are stepping up as the entire world transitions to renewable energy. And they are transitioning because it saves money by avoiding air, land and health impacts. And renewables and efficiency provides more jobs than fossil fuels. In Ohio, that's eight times more jobs. So House Bill 6 reduces Ohio's ability to grow these clean power jobs and instead forces its citizens to fund dirty and dangerous plants. I keep hearing this year's election is a battle for the soul of our country. Well, this situation is a battle for the soul of our state and for the future of our children. Governor Dewine, Ohio lawmakers, please do the right thing. Repeal this corrupt, shameful bill. And if you won't, search your souls and truly ask yourselves why you wouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight. Next, we're going to hear from Melissa English. Melissa?
Good evening. My name is Melissa English and I am the Deputy Director of Ohio Citizen Action. And I've been an Ohio resident since 1992. Despite the fact that precious few of them will ever hear it, I offer the following advice for Ohio lawmakers who are considering the repeal of House Bill 6. This is in your best interest. This is in your best interest to do, so do it now. No excuses. Why is it in your interest? Well, number one, you will have to pay for the bailout too. Forget for a moment your job, your position, the party and the campaign donors to which you must answer and just think as a person how unfair it is that you have to pay a bankrupt company to continue enriching itself instead of quietly going out of business as the market dictates. Number two, your health and safety is at risk from continued use of coal and nuclear power. Imagine your regret if there's an accident that vomits toxins or radioactivity into your air and water. And number three, you need to restore public faith in state government and the rule of law. As much as the sordid saga of House Bill 6 suggests otherwise, the people of Ohio still matter. You need us to elect you every few years and you don't want the taint of this swirling cesspool of corruption holding you back. If you voted for this law, you need a second chance. If you didn't, you need to push harder and faster. In other words, for your own sake, completely, cleanly and quickly repeal House Bill 6. No replace, or you will be complicit in the crime that two conspirators just today admitted. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Melissa. We appreciate you being with us tonight. And Melissa is our final witness. So thank you so much to each of our witnesses this evening and everyone who's participated in these three events. We appreciate you taking the time to be sure your voice was heard regarding the repeal efforts around House Bill 6. While tonight is our final scheduled public hearing, your voice still needs to be heard. We would urge anyone who would like to contact their lawmakers to do so by visiting www repele HB6.com to send a digital letter to your state representative and senator. Or you can leave a message for your lawmaker by calling them directly or calling the State House Switchboard at 1-800-282-0253. Time is running out to repeal the legislation at the heart of ever-evolving corruption and bribery scandal. We need your help to restore faith and confidence in our state government and keep Ohio consumers from paying the price by rewarding a corporation under federal investigation. Thanks again for your time and enjoy the rest of your evening. Good night.